Number number twelve, two thousand and nineteen at um for our regular city council meeting in Houston.
Councilman Sean Kip.
Number one. Sorry.
Number one.
Bastian.
Present.
Councilman Jim Cleveland.
Present.
Councilman Hope Lee.
Present.
And Councilman Adam Ledbetter.
Present.
Thank you very much. Okay, so next we are going to do the oath of office and I'm gonna turn that over to Thomas. Whose Bible you got?
Mr. Glenn Evans.
Oh.
Former mayor and city councilman. His Bible's been through a few swearings.
I can read the whole thing when you say I do, or I can read it slow and you repeat every word.
Okay.
Raise your right hand. I.
I.
Do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties devolved upon you as council member of the city of Houston, that you will faithfully enforce the laws of the city, that you will support and defend the charter of the city of Houston, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America, and that you will do all in your power to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Houston and the common interest thereof, so help me God. In addition to the above oath, you also affirm that you are not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you are not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which you, by the laws of the state of Georgia, are prohibited from holding, that you are qualified to hold this office according to the constitution and laws of Georgia, and further affirm that you will support the constitution of the United States and this state. Do you so swear?
I do.
Thank you.
You want to say every word?
I want every word.
Okay, do you want to say every word?
Every word.
Okay. You want to read it then?
Uh, see y'all.
Okay.
I stand sworn ass that do solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties devolved upon me as a council member of the city of Houston, that I will faithfully enforce the laws of this city, I will support and defend the charter of the city of Houston, as well as the constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and the United States of America, and that I will do all in the in my power to promote the general welfare of the inhabitants of the city of Houston and the common interest thereof, so help me God. In addition to the above oath, I also affirm that I'm not the holder of any unaccounted for public money due to the state or any political subdivision or authority thereof. I am not the holder of any office of trust under the government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which I am, by the laws of the state of Georgia, prohibited from holding, that I am qualified to hold the office according to the constitution and the laws of Georgia, and further affirm that I will support the constitution of the United States and this state. So help me God.
We're all looking forward to working together. Um, so if you if you don't mind, if you're still standing, just go ahead and stand up. Tammy Swift, will you lead us in a prayer?
Let us pray. Dear Lord, I first thank you for mercy and grace. As we gather in this meeting today, I humbly ask that you be in the midst. Help our council make decisions pleasing to you. God, lend to discuss matters at hand in a reasonable way. Dear Lord, let this meeting be productive and help us keep in the forefront you in all of our minds as we do set forth. In your holy name I do pray. Amen.
Jim, you want to do the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, I need to make the agenda approval. Any changes need to be done? All right. Thank you. Okay, um minutes approval. I need an approval for September fifth, two thousand and nineteen work session and public hearing minutes.
Motion approved, September fifth, two thousand and nineteen minutes.
Thank you. Second? Second. Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. September the ninth, two thousand and nineteen, regular meeting minutes.
Motion to approve, September ninth, regular meeting minutes.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Very good. There is no old business, so we'll jump right into the new business. Angel Ride request for the depot rental, nonprofit to waive the fees.
I need to approve the Angel Ride requesting the depot rental.
Thank you. Second? Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, um Justin, third party inspection ordinance, you want to just explain that right quick?
Yes, ma'am. You have any comment?
Please.
Hello, Mayor and Council. Before you tonight is one of the items we went over in work session on Thursday. It's the third party inspection program that the city is looking to adopt to um meet the compliance with the state law and uh to provide for um different items to take care of the process of third party inspections for those people who choose to use those. Um, answer any questions?
Not a question?
All we get was adopt the um the current states.
What were the items to adopt? They they give us certain things when we can, like uh the pre-qualification, uh the time limits, that kind of thing, and uh we can only function within that.
I understand.
Okay, can I get a motion, please?
Motion approved.
Thank you, Number One.
Second.
Second, good. All in favor? All right, thank you very much. And just stay right there, Justin, and talk to us about the zones.
Okay, um there are actually four different items here. The first one is the administrative rezoning of the twenty-one parcels on West Jefferson and Bell Avenue from R two to R three. Um, that's a city-initiated rezoning to um help these parcels and uh come into further, what we call substantial compliance with their current code.
Yeah, I have to report to the board. I just want to make sure we got each council member, Jim, under our charter, because everybody's present and everybody agreed, so we can adopt them tonight, which is one meeting. Otherwise, if anybody wants to send anything over, then it becomes a waiver of the first reading and it's about it can be adopted at the next month's meeting. So I just, I usually I make that point before we start talking about the ordinance, but I want to make sure everybody understands.
Now, explain if we only had three here.
If we only had three here, basically these would be just first readings of these orders. If I think they're not being adopted tonight, they would have some good first reading and they can be adopted the next month.
Okay, everybody got that? Okay, um can I have a motion for number one?
Motion for the administrative rezoning of twenty-one parcels on West Jefferson and Bell Avenue from R two to R three.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
Thank you, Adam. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, then number two?
Uh, this is part of uh some of the code updates that we're looking at tonight. Um, four point two is residential dimensional requirements. Um, it's to put um our minimum lot width requirements uh and to more standardize lot widths, and that's up for y'all's consideration too.
Okay. Can I have a motion?
Motion approved, Number Two.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, how about number three?
Um, number three is to um foot section six point five five of the zoning code, which is decent for townhomes, um put that into compliance with table four point two as the numbers uh for the lot size differ, and that's up for y'all's consideration as well.
Thank you. Got a motion?
Motion to approve, number three.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you. Okay, how about number five? It's number four. Skip one, didn't I? Number four.
Uh, number four is a scripters error in table four point three. Um, some of the um items got swapped around from institutional to C one, uh from C one to M two, so uh we're just correcting those, and those are up for your consideration as well.
Thank you. I need a motion?
Motion to approve correction, scripters error in table four point three.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, Dale, I'll let you handle number four.
All right. Uh, the city received three bids for renovation of the depot. There are some ADA items, some decking, some miscellaneous items. In fact, I think there were eleven different items that we asked for renovation of bids. There was a question as to the process that we followed at the last meeting, so I handed out a memo tonight to the city council that explained the process that we went through to receive these bids. Our financial policy was approved in two thousand and three, and there was an update in two thousand and six. City staff's currently reviewing these policies along with some other policies, and we'll make some recommendations early next year and some possible updates in some of our policies. This policy is currently written, has several different procedural requirements based upon estimated cost thresholds. Basically, what it says is if you have a purchase over five thousand dollars, the purchases uh need to have a competitive, formal competitive sealed bid, and those items would have to go through the normal state process. The second threshold, and there's five of them, is from twenty-five hundred dollars to five thousand, and these purchases would need, they're required to have an informal, non-advertised sealed bid. The next, and there's three other categories. What this staff had estimated the cost of the train depot would be around uh would be between five thousand or two thousand five hundred and five thousand, so we went through the informal bid process where we contacted several contractors. We received, however, we only received three bids back, and they range from forty-two hundred to sixteen hundred, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars. So I'd be more than happy to discuss more with the council if they wish. The three bids we had were forty-two hundred dollars, seventy-one thirty, seven thousand one hundred and thirty dollars, and last but not least, sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
I have a question.
Yes.
How do you do an informal sealed bid? Like, how's that work? Do these come in sealed, or do they just?
What they did is in the interpretation of sealed bid is there's no discussion between the contractors and what would be done, so we got several that were emailed to us, several that were mailed to us, so I took a sealed bid being coming back from them.
So there's not like a bid opening like there is when you do a formal?
Right. Our our policy doesn't specifically determine what an informal sealed bid was.
Right.
Um, it's an informal, non-advertised sealed bid is the definition, so I interpreted saying, contact individuals, have them not discuss it, send us bids, and move forward like that. Again, this is one of the items that we are looking at and will probably clarify in our updates and revisions for policies in the future.
Okay, one more question. If we were to select the lowest bidder, do we already know that they have insurance and?
We did some research on there, but we have used them in the past, and I would have to go through the file and sit down with the staff and see what requirements they may have to file for now, and if it doesn't meet what we have, obviously we would contact them and have them get there. My recommendation tonight is make, if the staff or if the council was to move forward, it would be under the contingency that they would meet all of our requirements. I got a concern with bid one. Okay. This was back in June. On the back here, it says proposal was valid for thirty days. Right. We actually contacted all three of these individuals, these firms, and said we would be moving it forward at this council meeting, and would they still go with their bids? And they said yes, they would still accept these bids.
And if we approved it tonight, he would be agreeing to this amount? So if they were to come back and say, oh wait, it's actually going to be this much now?
Yes. Yes, it would be this amount, and we would make sure that, you know, we would have a contract set ready for them that meets all of our requirements.
This is only based off of verbal, not nothing written, correct?
Correct.
So the committee doesn't have to state it?
Well, they would have to sign a contract, and if they don't sign a contract under the terms that we provide based upon this evening, then we wouldn't proceed forward. We would rebid this and come back to you later.
And you said staff estimated the cost, staff being moved?
Uh, we have our public works department, we have individuals from public works, where we talked to them, they're in the construction realm, and they came up with estimated fees of what they think this project would be.
Is any is anything wrong here that needs to be replaced or if this is considered an emergency, or would knock us out of compliance as far as they see it?
Uh, I'm not sure what the definition of emergency is. Once we define an item that would be an ADA requirement, we need to move with just haste to rectify that issue, and that's why we're bringing these items forward. Um, some of these items should be addressed as soon as possible, but I can't say whether they um align or not align with ADA requirements.
I understand. I believe the uh handrails are going to be on, but it might be out of compliance.
Are you, do you remember?
No, one of them is.
One.
It's been five months, I can't imagine it's terrible news.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the forty-two hundred dollar bid from absolute non-advert solutions, conditional, check into final injunction.
Thank you. Can I get a second? Okay, all in favor? All right, let's get the depot fixed up. Thank you very much. Okay, um number five.
There was a concern placed some time ago about individuals having to speak their address for public record. This provision in our ordinance actually says that the individuals need to sign in the sheet, and if the presiding officer cannot read what they signed in, then they can ask them at the, basically at the podium to clarify and say that, but it does not require that individuals state their address at the podium. They do need to still say their name.
Do I want to talk about that, or does someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that, the revisions to section three dash two zero six rules for conduct of business.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um consideration of J A T Consulting contract.
Okay, we presently have J A T Consulting under contract till the end of this year to provide us with financial advising services, and we were working with them for the past year. This is another contract to go from beginning of January through to the end of this year, or the end of twenty twenty. The only revision between this contract and the previous contract was that they added an accounting clerk, which gives them a lower hourly billing rate, and they would be able to utilize that individual to help us save money and loan. There, uh, some of the council members asked for additional information on this, and I I sent an email with the head individual that works with us, Rachel Bembry. We sent her resume and contact information to the firm for individual research.
I have one question. Um, have we worked on taking some things away from Rachel, like minimizing the things that she was doing?
Yes, we're we're establishing what she's required and not required for, removing some of the issues like payroll away from her and some writing bills and things like that. We're doing some reorganization in the city, and we believe next year with the reorganization that hopefully we'll be moving forward that we would be able to do a lot more things in turn.
So would that inquire us, I guess revising her state contract once we relinquish her certainties?
No, her contract would still be under these fees, we would just be giving her less duties. So instead, like, for example, she has been doing timesheets, she's been working with timesheets and writing payroll, there's no need for her to do that. We have staff internally that can do that, so she wouldn't be able, or she she could do that if she had to, if someone was not available, so it's a backup, but uh we would be not utilizing our specific services.
So whose jurisdiction is this one currently? Is it under her currently, or are we waiting to hire somebody?
All of these individuals right now are under the city administrator, and she has been used, she has been doing that, she was hired prior to becoming aboard. Now that I'm moving, I've been here a little bit, I'm getting some things under my belt, that would be a task that I could take away, and I would actually be doing some. Right now, I'm doing, approving all of the timesheets, she used to do those before, and now we're going to move towards not only me doing the timesheets, but me, I would also be doing all the payroll.
And for those of y'all not familiar with Rachel and what she has done in the past year, she has been a tremendous help in us being able to understand her better and getting her to clarify. If she'll answer any questions here.
Motion to approve G A T consulting contract.
Thank you. I need a second.
Second.
I got you too. Uh, all in favor? Thank you very much. Okay, number seven.
Number seven was brought to us from the D C A. If we are recipient of federal funds for the C D B D grant, city is obligated to make provisions to reduce language barriers for non-English speaking individuals as outlined in this plan. If there are issues that come forward, this explains how we go about doing that, and the D C A is available to assist us in these matters moving forward. It is a requirement as part of accepting the funds for the C D B D grant, which was a six hundred thousand dollar grant for the Panther Court grinder pump removal, to put it actually on sewer line. I'd be more than happy to answer questions.
So when, do we only need to use this if someone came up and needed to ask questions?
Correct.
And we don't have a staff member that's by legal, I guess?
Correct. They would they would be accessible to come and help us with that, they would come and help us find um someone that might be of their native speaking language to help.
Motion to approve the language access plan.
Second.
Second, good. All in favor? Thank you. We don't have a need for executive session tonight. Um, Jennifer, want to talk about our upcoming events?
Um, so on November twenty-first, we have our twenty twenty uh budget public hearing at five thirty at City Hall. Um, there is actually a copy of our projected budget at City Hall for anybody's um reference. Uh, there's a special call meeting for the residents of solid waste and recycling collection on the twenty-first at six o'clock at City Hall. Um, our next work session will be December the fifth at the train depot at five thirty. We'll also have a, on the ninth, we'll have a budget adoption for our twenty twenty budget at five thirty at the train depot. Brager Council meeting at December the ninth as well at six o'clock. Um, we're going to have breakfast with Santa on December the fourteenth, and on December the sixteenth, we'll have a planning convention meeting at six fifteen at City Hall. Um, City Hall will be closed on the twenty fifth, twenty sixth, and twenty seventh of December.
Make sure that you guys keep this close by because um we couldn't always have the depot, it was running out, so that first budget meeting is going to be over at City Square in the council, okay? And then, if you'll notice down here where it's got the ninth and the ninth, um the budget adopt adoption starts at five thirty, and will follow with our city council meeting that we figure is going to be around six. My fellows will be right there with you. Okay? Yes.
I understand there's been some discussion about uh being in charge of the city. If it's something you all want to do, the other particular rule is uh there's four limited things you can do for the overall amendments, if you want major changes, quickly change the former government, for instance, um municipal city manager, former government, goes have to go to the legislature, that like the session begins mid-January, so we have time, but if that's something you all are interested in, we need to move it on because there's notice requirements and things like that, so.
Do we have to make a motion in here about anything, or?
Um.
Or do we just decide that?
If it's something that the, there's a consensus to do that, then um what I would suggest, on the G M A website, they have a couple of model charts.
Yeah, I already have one.
And so you take a look at those, so um but there are particular peculiarities in our charter that we will want to incorporate into even a model that you all may want to start with. So um if that's a desire, then you all can either do it, one of you can do it and um but I think it needs to be, the last time it was done, uh I think it was back when Jim Jester, I recall that he headed it up, and then it was tabled or set aside, and then the new council came in and picked that one up, did some work to it, and then we sent it up to the uh legislature. But they had a number of public meetings about it, um in the line by line. I'm not sure that that's necessary unless you all want to do that, but I do think that you all need to perhaps come up with a one that you all want to work with, and then perhaps have a work session, some sort of public meeting, and discuss it.
Could we have a committee? Could two of us take that on to work on it and work with you and Dale and bring it back?
What we need to, um, I'd say update just her charter now, so that's what I see your and say as well.
What you do is whatever, you you would, you get the charter replaced, what you want, and then if there are changes, you need to raise the ordinances to conform them in the charter after you did. It's sort of like, not exactly, but it's like the charter's a constitution, the ordinances are the statutes, so uh you want to get your charter replaced and then you would conform the ordinances to whatever the charter said, if there are change, if there are discrepancies or inconsistencies after that.
And when we turn it in to Tommy Benton, who's the representative, um then he takes it, and their attorneys look over it, and then we get it back, and then we might have to make some other changes, so it's kind of a conversation. Yeah, it's back and forth and back and forth.
Your local delegation is one of the more active local delegations when it comes to these things, um and they they, especially the, one of the representatives in one of the senators usually takes a pretty good look at this stuff, and they have questions about it, so uh and as session gets closer, they get busier, and and your local delegation has some seniority now, so they've got committees and things that they're going to be involved in, so as soon as you uh get something to them and they get it to ops and legislative council, more likely we are to be able to get something to do.
Remember here, I'm the part of town.
And and uh it would be Tommy Benton and Frank Yen.
Thank you.
And both of those I have spoke with, so they know that we are in the process. Tommy Benton said that he wished we could wait a year because he would like for the new census to come on, uh but I told him that we we really wanted to move forward, and he hadn't refused. I would also suggest that at some time another one were working with us, that we have him come and listen to them, see if they have agreements these all the time. It probably helps.
How much of his input should be gathered with? He's technically not a resident of the city, he's just a representative, not a resident, so how much of his input should be gathered as far as, I don't know, that's not a finding, regardless of how many he's been doing it or whatnot, he's not a member of the city. I mean, then he has to do a statement too and review and revise.
You get some side with it, then you do the part.
It can be a little bit rough, I understand.
Typically, the legislature is not going to adopt any legislation, the legislation is unanimous. And that's the general, that's the general practice in the legislature. So you you've got to have your local delegation. Typically, what they want is they want the local, they want you all to be unanimous and asking for it to be done, and then they want the local delegation to be unanimous in in its presentation.
So what I guess what I'm going to ask the census is, what does he have necessarily the power to change versus what we put forward and not just correcting like some errors in there, like what would need to be, I guess, to his satisfaction versus the general consensus of the people in the city?
The last time we did it, he was interested in the city having worked for the electoral process. Um, the Houston is really too small to to make that effective. Um, the one, one, another city with every flower and branch, um, actually.